Sorry for the five-minute delay. If we could start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Citizens input? Anybody that would like to ask a question or have somebody, have something to say about what's on tonight's agenda? Nobody from a million fans out there?
No hands.
All right. We will move on to... I don't know why that came up.
I would like to just kind of point out in the minutes, I'm looking out at the, and I'm going to go like this, I'm looking out at the crowd right now, and everybody in the crowd that I can see is a department head.
Or elected official.
Or elected official. I'm looking at the Zoom, and I see a town employee. So we might just want to reflect in the minutes, we're kind of getting to the goal line with the budget that we're going to put on the ballot, and we posted this meeting, right, per 91A?
Yes.
And the only people we have here are elected officials and department heads. Nobody's online. Hopefully about, you know, 2,500 people will watch this tomorrow via YouTube. I don't know. But just thought I'd point that out.
So administration, I need a motion to accept Mr. Jack Kozak's $100 food pantry donation.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
Need to, do, can they expend those funds? So you want to accept and, and accept and expend those funds? Just add it spent, so that way they can, they can spend their money at, with the food pantry, okay?
You fine with that amendment, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine.
And still seconded, and still, everybody, aye?
Aye.
We're good. Thank you, Diane.
Otherwise it just sits there.
Okay.
And she might know something about the way we're supposed to say those things.
Maybe.
Maybe. She looks familiar.
She has that familiar face.
Like that other guy, they used to always come up. Warrant article review and discussion.
The one on your shared drive document, a very, very rough draft. I took a look at last year's warrant, and anything that was what I considered a one-off, anything considered a one-off, I didn't include. So the document that you have in front of you is based on conversations that I've heard at board meetings about areas of interest? So if we can just get on them real quickly, when you have them?
Is it just on the shared?
Yes.
Okay.
For some reason, nothing's opening for me, but it might, might be my...
Can we take a five-minute recess, Mr. Chairman? I'll run downstairs and burn off some copies.
Um, sure.
Actually, can we, can we move on to some other business?
That's what I was just looking at. Let's, let's take care of some approvals while you're doing that, Joe.
All right.
I'll print these down. Everybody's not opening, or just Matt's?
Just mine.
Mine opened. Joe, you want a hard copy?
I got it.
Mike, your phone?
Just print the rest of it.
Yep, I got it. We can, we can share it.
Yeah, we can share.
We're good. Let's go through those.
All right, we're good.
You good, Bob?
So Article 1 is just like the officials.
Which has placeholders for dollar values for the proposed, and then the default budget, which we'll be building probably next meeting. Article 2 proposed, again, very rough draft, $10,200 to be deposited in the engineering capital, and renovation capital reserve fund, established in 2015, funds to come from the unassigned fund balance. That was on last year, and...
Yep.
I believe the purpose was related to the exterior of the PD, second-floor sliders. Does that sound right, Mike? So that's what that fund is, is, was established for.
Yeah.
And it's up to you whether or not you want to continue to fund it again, in the same amount that you did last year. The next article is the town building capital reserve fund, $50,000 to be deposited from the unassigned fund balance. And the current balance is...
Which number are we on?
Three.
It goes three.
Because, because what I'm not, if we're on three, what I'm not getting is two is the rental income from our tenant at, at 8 Merrimack Road. That's just accepting the rental income for the year and putting it in the revolving account, capital reserve fund.
What?
Hold on. That's the one.
If, if we're looking at the right one, so.
That's the only one I have.
I'm not following any of them.
Under 1120.
Yeah, no, Jim's got his proposed ones that he's going over. That's the other one, I think that we had.
The only one that's on the shared drive, we're not matching up with what you're reading.
That's it.
Two's the $10,200.
Thank you.
Anybody else see one?
The engineering and renovation cap.
That's what I just talked about.
I'll look at it from here.
Yeah, so I always feel like I'm on the news, but what's just been handed to me...
Breaking news.
Breaking news. So this one has, one is for the officers, right, town officers. Two is the default proposed, and then there's two twos, so...
That's why it's a draft.
Two, right.
So 2A.
2A is the default proposed. 2B is $10,200, which represents the rental income from 8 Merrimack Road, and depositing that in the engineering and renovation fund, which we do every year, so.
Who told you you had to do that?
Town council about eight, nine years ago, so.
Really?
We would deposit it every month.
So the engineering and renovation fund was not related to improvements at the PD? It was related to be an account to hold rental income?
To be used, yeah, so, yeah, we, we actually could put a lot of things in there, but we've just been, in this warrant article, we put the 10-2, $10,200 in there, and then we can use it for any buildings, not necessarily that building, so.
I think it's specific to 8 Merrimack Road.
It is.
Is it?
Yes.
And that's fine, too.
And the other account that we have is town building fund. That was the one that has $256,000 in it.
Yeah, so that, the one you just went over is, is three, which is, like you said, last year, we asked for $50,000 to go into that account.
Correct.
Yep. Now I think we're on...
So the real number four is up. It's the police cruisers capital reserve. Last year you put in $25,000. This is a carryover from last year again. It's up to you whether you want to keep it or not.
What's in there?
Oh, I'm sorry. Seventy.
$70,000, I believe.
We take it off this year. I don't think we need that one this year. It's my opinion, I mean, we just bought three.
Yeah, I'm of the same opinion.
And we have 70 in there? I'm definitely comfortable with that one off.
Yeah, so the...
There are 32 in there.
We had to take some out of that.
Payment was taken out.
Right, so we're down to what?
32, too.
Okay.
Yeah, so the only thing to consider is that's not necessarily for purchasing. You can use it for maintenance as, maintenance as well, so.
Right.
So that's something to think about, whichever way we go. If we take it off this year, then we'll have a little less. I don't know what the line item for maintenance is in the proposed versus the default, so something to think, we don't have to decide right now.
Well, it's coming out of, yeah, capital reserve, right?
Yeah.
And where the payment came out, that's where I was kind of curious where it was at because of that.
I, it doesn't have to be done now.
Yeah, something to think about.
For, for my decision anyway, to think about that, have the officer in charge weigh in on, on when the spots are on.
I was just going to say that.
But it doesn't have to be tonight, just think about weighing in if that 32,000 is needed. I appreciate your professional opinion.
That's a, a balance of 32,000 in the capital reserve for cruiser and equipment.
Looking at a warrant of adding 25,000 to it.
In the warrant articles to add another 25,000.
Well, we're not, we're not going to be purchasing a vehicle in 2024. In 2025, we anticipate one or two that we need purchased to replace the look at.
That's different, okay.
So then we would be better off putting it in.
Yeah.
But we're not, we don't have to hold steady at 25 either, right?
Sure. I just wanted, I want professional thoughts.
Something to think about.
That would be okay at 25,000.
Is that staying on, or do you want it off?
We're going to keep it on.
I like to keep it on.
Keep it on for now.
On for draft purposes.
Okay. The next article is the fire apparatus and equipment slash refurbishment funds, $25,000. The current balance is $90,387. And by the way, that's of October 31st, we don't have the, this balance sheet yet. The next one is a warrant article related to leasing of land for a cell tower. As Matt appropriately pointed out a couple of meetings ago, the board has authority for up to a year to lease town land and property, and then it expires, and you don't want to do a year-to-year with a cell tower. So I believe that this warrant article came from town council. It's similar to one used in another community recently, and it spells out the map and lot number. And in addition, because the lot is a lot bigger than the space required for a tower, it gives, this warrant article gives you the authority to designate in such dimensions, you see it bolded?
Yeah.
That gives you the latitude that you wouldn't have had if we just did a map and lot number. Let's see. And obviously, there's no tax associated with that. I have placeholders now.
So this would, this would put us under via like a contract, correct? If this passes?
If, if this warrant article passes, you can then begin negotiations with the vendor of your choice, and then you want to go through the process of the permitting requirements from ZBA planning, and although you don't have to, it's, it's really good to do that because it's more airtime to talk about a topic that's likely to get charged a little bit, and can be passionate.
It's not a contract. We don't have to do it still.
No, I'm saying though, once we do it, it would fall under a contract.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It'd be leasing for you.
In the default.
For the property.
Right. Okay.
I have a recreation coordinator placeholder. I'm waiting on language for that. Do we want to establish a 275th anniversary revolving fund?
I thought Joe said he was paying for it all.
Oh, no, not this time around. Not this year. Maybe next year. Yes, I'd like, I'd like to look at a figure of about $40,000 in that.
Forty thousand?
Yes.
What would that include? What are you thinking? Like hit the big ones?
Uh, fireworks.
Yep.
Uh, we want to throw a huge parade. We want to have a celebration for a movie night and a barbecue.
Okay.
Joe, you need to speak up a little bit.
Sorry.
So everybody can hear you.
Mike, I think he's talking, not so he can hear you. So other people can hear you. We can hear you. Okay. I don't know if it should be a 275th anniversary revolving fund, or if it just go, should go into the rec fund.
Well, or somewhere in the middle, right? Because in 25 years, you know, hopefully, we have another one in 25 years, and if there's anything left, so you could call it out as a town anniversary fund or whatever. Because, yeah, it probably shouldn't be called 275.
You don't have a board in charge of the 275 fund, so to speak. Do you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, we have a commission, right? Because it's commissioned by the Board of Selectmen, yeah, so. But, so, I mean, the only other alternative is a line item. If, if it's not a warrant article, it's a line item in the rec budget probably for an additional $40,000, which puts, you know, another...
Yeah. Yes, past what they do is they had in a, in a capital reserve revolving fund, and they paid out of that.
Yeah. Because, because what I'm thinking is, you know...
I get what you're saying. If anything's left over, you want to use it for the next...
Interest-bearing, you know, 25 years from now, you guys will still be on the board, so I mean, you'll remember this. You'll be able to remind people, so.
So to recap, it's $40,000, and the revolving fund is the direction you want to move it?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say that you would like to have this funded from the unassigned fund balance?
Yes, please.
No tax impact? The next warrant article is a carryover from last year. It's basically the emergency management director's first warrant article, which would have been eight last year, and then there was a contingency warrant article number seven, which is this one, which establishes the emergency, emergency management revolving fund. The other article that was akin to this last year dissolved the existing one.
Right.
So you dissolved and created. This one would be rewarded, reworded if you want to add more money to it.
Could, we hear from Ms. McCarthy for a minute, please? Trish, could you please inform us of what's in there and what you might anticipate?
Sure.
If you're going to need to add, let me see if I can talk right. If you are going to need added monies in that.
Okay, so if I had a crystal ball, I could actually answer that, but let me tell you what's in it. When that warrant article passed on March 14th, we closed out that trust, I don't know if it was a trust fund, whatever the name of that account was, and the voters approved it to go into the revolving account. So we closed it out with, again, I'm going $8,417, I think, something like that. So that went into that account. Now, you will, at your next meeting, I'm going to be giving you motions for all the FEMA money, the grants that I wrote, that's now going to be put into that account that was created. We have found all the money. So that's like 181,000 something. And then there's another 37,000 we're still looking for, and another 38,000 that's coming. FEMA approved it, but I haven't received it yet. So all that money's going to be going in there, but some of it is going to be used for, I think we allotted a certain amount for the ambulance. So I won't be in bare bones, but I'm going to use a lot of that money for that ambulance. So yes, could I use money? Yep. But I will...
Everybody could.
Right, but I do have 37,000 as soon as we find it that could go into that. And the only thing we use that for is when we have emergencies, that's for supplies, equipment, payroll, you know, ink for the printer, when we have, if we're in the middle of an emergency, it pays the staff at, you know, a glorious $14.22 an hour, my EOC workers that come in. So that account is very helpful to have with money in it.
Right. So from what I'm hearing about what you said about monies that are coming in or whatever, I feel comfortable saying that we could afford to stand pat for right now with that, and we could always, if need be, fund money from somewhere else in to, to support that?
It can come from Joe's 275th money.
There you go.
But, no, I mean, I, we're, we're having a tight time here, I get it. So I think with the money that we're looking for, I'll be okay.
Yep.
So I think we can leave it.
All right. So right now, we'll look at it for standing pat.
Trish?
Thank you.
Please keep, please keep in mind that the fund that was dissolved last year by the vote of the legislative body had a balance that was transferred into the new account of about $8,400.
Right. Good, thank you. See, I was close, 8,417, right?
So, yeah, we'll get rid of that one this year.
Would you make a note, please, to, to, oh, with you? Letters to the trustees and letters to the treasurer? Were you here for that? Oh, did Robin come in? I think you typed them.
Letters to the trustee.
Based on the warrant and things passing, money to, money to be deposited in the capital reserve funds?
Can you do it sometimes?
Okay, all right. We need to chat a little bit after, after the meeting.
Yeah, and I mean, it goes without saying before we leave this, is that last sentence would be removed, right? If, if we, if we were to keep this, because the last sentence is language that says Article 7.
Yes, yeah, that's all we can, yep. But based on what I'm hearing now, it's going to come off this year?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. The next article is for social service agencies in the community. The total is 30,600, excuse me, $30,363. It's for, it's for 12 social service agencies that work with the residents of Newton. This is a perennial, it's on every year. The only recommendation I would make is that since it's been said yes to so many times, you made a board decision to only put on the warrant when there's a new request from a new agency. These things will stay pat, and you'll be dealing with adding an agency to it or dropping one off, or whatever the case may be.
What about if there's an increase?
You can, you can drop it off without a warrant article. But as long as you keep putting this in, it's going to stay in, even if somebody pops out or folds or closes, or no longer provides services to Newton residents. So again, it's kind of confusing, but if you're going to, if you're entertaining adding another social ser, social service agency, excuse me, that agency and that agency alone can be the warrant article for the amount that they've requested you've approved.
Would that apply to an increase if one of these agencies comes across and wants an increase?
You hear Joe?
Would that apply for an increase as well? If one of the agencies gets a plus?
Yes, yes.
Because it's now a line item, right?
It would go into the operating budget as a line item.
Right. So my only question is, would we put this under, like where would we capture it and what department? And I believe it's the one I'm thinking of.
Executive?
Is it an executive?
Well, no, it can be put in there. It's not in the budget, no.
Okay.
It's, the checks are cut directly from the warrant, basically.
Right.
That's the backup.
I'm just wondering if it's going to skew the, you know, but it would be part of the default?
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Because it's successfully made it through multiple times.
Correct.
Okay, so that, that's probably a good idea.
I would say we should put it in the executive.
Yeah, one less warrant article, you know.
Now, the next article is for the solid waste disposal budget, and the amount of $60,000 to be taken from the transfer station slash recycling special revenue fund, created in 2003 for this purpose.
So, I...
Mr. Guy has been doing some homework.
I think we don't need that. Going by if, the numbers that I got from Peyton and where we're going to be at with the default and the proposed, I don't think we need that. Because I don't think it was reflected in the numbers that I got. I got the actual dollar amounts paid to Mellow.
What did, what did you get from Peyton? The document I have from the bank dated September of 2023, so it doesn't include October's interest, had $261,000.
Is in that account?
In, in that recycling fund that's going to support the transfer station budget for that line.
Right, currently, right now. So what I'm saying is, is I don't think we need to do that this year.
So you, you're saying we don't need the additional $60,000?
That's what I'm saying. I don't think we need the additional $60,000 to offset.
And we're, the, in addition to that, my thought process was that because of the cost of the recyclers and what we're receiving, that within a matter of a few more years, if we continue to do that, it's going to be at zero, and the town at some point is going to have to absorb that money. So like Dan was talking about, it already being paid out of the budget to begin with, that we would be better off withdrawing, like every other year, on the need-be basis for hazardous waste, and we could use that money towards that, and it would last a lot longer doing it that way.
Yeah, we fell into this thing where we used to do hazardous waste every other year, and the voucher every other year. Somebody put a warrant article, petitioned warrant article, so we picked up the voucher based on the voters. We picked up the voucher every single year.
Yeah.
So we're hitting it every other year, we're hitting it twice essentially. So it's one of those things, the revenue doesn't really match the spend, so, so maybe this is the year that we take it off.
Yep.
Yeah. It's just my opinion. Jim may see a different lead book.
The current line has a budget of, bear with me.
Where do you have it?
Yeah.
What do you have in front of you, Dan? What are those numbers that you...
Anyway, what do you have?
I got actuals from Peyton.
What's the number?
So...
Until October.
The total solid waste disposal budget proposed for 2024 is $545,200. Now, you're just looking at hauling, is that what you want?
Disposal and hauling.
Disposal and hauling?
Yeah.
Okay. Disposal, he's asking for, proposed is $230,000.
Yep.
Which is up from last year by about $35,000. Hauling, he's asking for $90,000, which is up $20,000 and $64 difference.
Which is too low anyways.
Which is what?
It's, even his proposed is too low, it won't cover it.
His proposed won't cover it.
It's about $2,500 short of what Dan's calculation is.
Okay. Well, you mean, so that's just those two line items? There are other line items in here?
Right, right. Exactly. I'm just talking that this number...
Right, you're talking about that warrant article?
Right.
Right, and you're thinking you don't need...
For that reason, and I'm thinking we don't need it if we budget properly. We don't need to take it from there.
Okay.
So...
All right, so I just was giving you that information.
Yeah, no, 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 and I appreciate that.
So I'd say we strike it and see where it goes from there.
Now, the next article is also transfer station related.
But it would be a strike for that one as well, because it's...
Because we just had hazardous waste.
Right, we did it this year, and it's every other year.
Yeah, yeah. That was hazardous waste day for those watching at home.
Right.
Number 11 was, that was an initiative we did for the first time last year. Long story short, most people are familiar probably with the cisterns and the fire ponds. We don't have town water and we had nothing on budget to kind of address those in terms of deterioration and fixing. So we created this to get 25,000 placed in there for the purposes of, you know, kind of working on those. And I could be wrong, but I don't believe we've touched that all year.
Yeah, I strike that one. Strike that one right off the ballot.
So I feel
Here consensus, not the loudest.
Well, I'm just wondering in front of you, does it still say $25,000?
Yes.
But to
So we haven't touched.
To Matt's point, we haven't touched it because no work's been done on it.
Exactly.
And I'm sure it's not going to be too cheap, so I might be, would be more apt to put another 25 grand in there and then hold.
I agree with that. We put 25 in and nothing happened, so I'm not comfortable putting another 25.
Well, I know for a fact that we were told that a bunch of them aren't working and they need to be fixed.
Yeah. But we got nothing.
Well, we need to make them work.
Anything, keep it in as a draft?
Yeah.
Let's get the department head to weigh in.
Sure.
And if it is, and it hasn't been done, then we need to address another issue because something hasn't gotten done.
Exactly. So we're going to leave it in in the draft.
Good.
Sounds good.
Because that's coming from the unexpended fund, unassigned fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next one was a petition.
Well, it will be a petition. I ran it to Pat today and she told me that she anticipates it's coming in. She was not sure whether or not she needed 25 signatures. So I advised her that as a petition warrant article, 25 signatures are required each time you want it on the ballot.
Yeah, last year, this was successful with the $3,000. What we do is there's about three paid employees down at the boat ramp. And, you know, it's coverage every day, not all day. And this year was kind of weird with the rain, but, and then there are six to eight volunteers who put in their hours. So it's been pretty successful. I mean, a lot of the boats that come in, I can't say that we've had any dire problems like milfoil or fan work, but we've taken some off the boats and the big thing is educating everyone. So far, Country Pond has stayed relatively clean.
And that's the importance of it, as you stated.
Education.
I mean, as you can see, our ponds already, when you drive by them, the milfoil and all that, that has taken over them, the importance of this program to try to help reduce any further damages to them.
And a lot of boats come from there, you know, like Pow Wow being infected. And their boat will come there and will say, well, wait a minute, you know?
Right.
You got to clean off here.
Yep.
All right, so we'll leave it for now because it's probably going to come in anyways.
Yeah.
The last thing I might want to throw out for discussion is the board is required to do a cyclical revaluation every five years. It's up again in 2020. It's cost about $100,000. So your 2025 budget will include $100,000. My suggestion would be to create a capital reserve fund and put 20 in a year so you don't get that large spike in 2025. And it's just 20,000 each year for five years and then you have money in the bank, so to speak.
Right.
To take it out and do the cyclical revale, which is required by statute. So that's just a thought. I can throw some language together if you like.
So why don't we put that in the rough draft?
Okay.
Seeing how's it makes sense.
And the last, the last one that I have, Mike, the road agent is probably going to speak to it. I gave you sample language? All right. Because it's a warrant article, can you just kind of talk about it now? I'll give the board a copy of draft language that didn't make the cut.
Mike, at this point, you should have it on record, right? Where you can just play it over again?
Good evening, board. Michael Verro, good evening.
Hey, Mike.
We mentioned this last week or the week before.
Yep.
It's a warrant
Thank you.
to do a bond for road repairs. So it's going to be over a long duration period. And the bond, which Jim informed me today, which is actually nicer, will set a bond amount and I'm working with that town engineer. When we establish that bond, the funds that we draw, and again, over most years, is only the funds that we will be charged for. So let's hypothetical numbers. Say we take out a bond for $5 million. We're not going to use the whole $5 million in three or four years. It's going to be over a duration of time. I don't know what that time is. But we'll only draw out of it as we make a schedule for road repairs that makes sense. So if we draw down, so let's say the first year we use 400, that's all we'll be charged for out of that bond.
So for you homeowners, what Michael's talking about is basically your home equity loans. It's the same idea.
Yeah, pretty much. Good analogy. Yeah.
So is it called a bond, though? I thought those were called the lease.
No, it'll be a bond. The language is a bond.
Really?
Yeah.
Thought it was called the lease when you're only paying on that amount and you're not.
Well, the language looks like it still says bond, Jim, right?
It is a bond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you came up with a figure and with the
No, no, we're still working on the figure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just need to know from the board whether or not you want me to put it back on as a draft?
Yes.
Instead of something, okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for the warrants.
Actually, I think there's one more, EMS.
I have three, four.
Trinity?
No, no, I think what our intent is, we've talked about is if we build a case, like a business case, to take on ambulance service ourselves, that we would propose it to the town through a warrant article and basically say, we think it's going to cost X amount of dollars to do this. We'd like to establish. And I know when the chief was last year, here last year, he thinks we already have an account we could put the money in. I just want to make sure that account met muster for everything we'd have to do.
Did he say it's a budget account or?
No, it was a revolving fund, one of the fire department ones. My, so just kind of to, what I'm talking about here is, like I always, I always use the phrase business case. We want to change the way we do business. I think we've talked ad nauseam in here that we have outside ambulance services, which doesn't seem like a long-term solution. So one of the things we could propose is staffing, buying equipment and going out on our own. But I don't think we can do that without hearing from the voters. If it costs as much as we think it might, that would vastly increase the proposed budget. And a warrant article would spotlight it so we could educate people about what we're trying to do.
So on that, I've done, I have done this before where you can do a warrant article that's literally like just a question. Not, no money attached to it or anything like that. Do you support Newton doing EMS in-house? Yes or no?
Right, but we would still need the money.
No, no, no. You can do it with no money.
Well, no, no, we'd still, I know, I know what you're saying because we've done that before with a lot of things, but, but kind of the, the whole warrant article would, would essentially be asking that question and if you do, we need X amount of dollars.
I don't know if we're going to have enough time to do that. I don't think we have a choice. If I'm wrong, I don't think we have a choice.
Please bear in mind that we need to add $130,000 to the operating budget to cover the costs associated with the May, excuse me, March 1st, 2024
Right.
contract with Pride Star Trinity, which goes until February
Right.
of 2026, five.
Five.
So it might be premature, not only from that perspective, but man, I don't think the data is available to come up with a plan in this short amount of time.
Well, we've discussed getting that data, right?
Yes, we have.
Yeah. So my
We probably won't have it in time.
That's what I was
Yeah, I wasn't, yeah, I, I'm a little disappointed to hear that. The way, the way I see that Pride Star contract is that's our insurance policy because it, like you just said, we're adding $130,000 to the proposed budget. If we go to a default, you know, we're going to be scrambling.
No, it goes into the default too.
Oh, it's a contract. Sorry, strike that. So, so my, my thing would be that's the insurance policy. I'd like to see a warrant article, but I would like to, whatever we have to do, steal shamelessly from other communities, but I'd, I'd like a kind of airtight number proposal that we can say to voters, you know, this is what, what we'd like to, to get to.
What we're roughly looking at, because nothing's going to be edged in stone.
Right.
It says airtight. You say roughly. I'm like, all right, where are we at?
Well, what
It'll be roughly because we can compare to other towns, but we're not identical and our services wouldn't be, you know what I mean?
But here's what I mean by airtight, because I think we're saying the same thing. What I mean by airtight is we need to ask every question and have an answer to it because we might think, and it's, it's nobody's fault, it's just people are coming at this from different angles. We might not know the right questions to ask in order to take it on. I always give the example of lifeguards. We, we took a number, we need so many lifeguards, so much per hour, so many days a week. And then we did it, it passed and then we're like, well, wait, that's not enough. We need lifeguard supervisors. We need equipment. So we can't take that approach with something that's important where we need to ask, do we have to upgrade the fire station? Do we have to pay for certifications? Do we have to? So the number should come in close to what you're saying. We have to, have to build in some.
You want to be able to answer questions
Yep.
at the same time.
Yeah. But I, I could be mistaken, but when we last talked about it, I thought that's what we're driving towards because we, we just need to lock and load this with, with a number by, before we go to print.
I agree that that's the direction we're going, but I wasn't fully under the assumption that it was going to be completed by the time we have to go to ballot, I guess. I just didn't think so.
So let's play it out, right? Let's say it doesn't. We go and we get the yes vote. Let's say the yes vote comes in March. And then we go and put that whole other piece together and it becomes airtight.
You're saying based on a general question?
Sorry, on the general question, yeah, right?
Yep.
Then where do you go with that, at that point? And how much time do you have to get approval and then implement?
Right.
Right? And I think if we don't have it by the time it goes to print, both, we want a yes and the money, I think you start backing yourself up against a time limit
Sure.
not to use the outside vendors anymore.
Right.
And then we become a rate taker and here's your new price and it's that much higher.
Which
Well, let me ask this, being devil's advocate. If we propose to the town, it may improve doing in-house, is not, is that not permission in itself to establish and?
You didn't put a dollar to it.
Yeah.
So
Yes, you can do it because it's not going to cost me anything. Go ahead, do it.
We didn't, but you're not saying that in the warrant.
You're not not saying it, which means you have to put a dollar figure and let them know because everything that we're asking for
I think
has a dollar not to exceed.
I think that it would be, if we were to draft the question, it would be a rough number. You would have to put a rough number on it because like you said, everybody's going to vote yes for it. So if we put a rough number, whatever the number that we all agree on
Not to exceed.
could be a rough number, would you be in favor of this? And then at the end it says non-binding, meaning we don't have to do it. It's just, we're just asking this question, but we want everybody's input because we can't get it any other way. It's, it's just, I think we definitely should put a dollar amount if we do that question. So we know. To your answer, to your question, we 100% could do it and just say we're going to do it. We don't need the town's approval to do it. I want the town to say yes. But I guess so if we do ask the question and the town says yes, we can just start planning to do it if there's no money attached to it. Because we already know that that's what the town people want, townspeople want it. You know what I mean?
Yep.
So, I mean, it can be done without going to vote to do it in-house. But then we have to do, we have to market to pass our budget.
Correct.
Is what Plastow is doing right now. Their selectmen voted to do it in-house. And now the fire department's marketing to pass the budget.
Right.
So it's included in the budget. It's not a warrant article.
And, and I guess what I'm saying is that's what I want to do. However, in my opinion, in this town, because it's such a game changer and Plastow's a much bigger budget, that's why I want to call it out with a warrant article. Can we attach a round number to it? Absolutely. That concerns me because I, like I just gave that example, that's a small example, but I want to know that every question has been answered because I don't want anybody, whether it's on Facebook or here or whatever, to start saying, they're just rounding up. They don't know what they're talking about. And, you know, the way I see it is whatever that was, five years ago, we built a new fire station and we educated people about it. We had a, we had a pamphlet, we had meetings and we had, this is how much we're going to cost for this, this is what we're going to do. So that's the approach I'm looking for.
I mean, so the problem I see is when does it have to go to ballot, January 3rd?
Go to print, you're saying?
Well, they have to be submitted by.
Submitted by?
Your public hearing is scheduled for January 15th.
So yeah, that's
About the 3rd, a month.
Yep.
But I mean, I, I come from a different world, a business world. And in the business world, if we're doing this, we get the right people together with a facilitator who can ask the right questions, lock the door
Sure.
and we'd probably have it done in a day. So, but that's just me.
So we'll put it on the rough draft. We'll see what happens because we're, we're already looking to facilitate, right?
And I would be
If anybody's willing to take a cut as a language, I'd be grateful.
Yep. On for the draft?
Yeah.
Yep, I'd be texting the department head tonight saying this is what is needed.
And I think, I know what you're saying. I think the key thing about the language depends upon if we can use the existing, whatever it is, revolving account to, because for those who don't know what we're talking about, these revolving accounts have very clear language about what it can be used for. If we're going to turn around to use this to pay wages, to buy equipment, do we have a revolving account with the fire department named on it that would allow us to do that? And the other part of this too is, should be mentioned is if we are in business and we're bringing in revenue from insurance companies, that's where we could put it. So we, we, that's another part of the case making to the voters is that, yeah, you're giving us X amount of dollars, but we will recognize with revenue over the first year, this amount that will offset.
Sure.
Except it's the first year, right? You want
Yeah.
I would project the next four, five years out.
Exactly.
That's the number we want.
Yeah.
But I know sometimes with DRA, they kind of will stop us in terms of our language. In other words, in 1989, when you set up this revolving account, you didn't intend to do that. So you need to have a warrant article with the language to change that we might have to do that, you know?
Sure.
And we do have an ambulance service revolving fund with a balance of $43,460.
Yeah. So that might be the one.
Yeah.
So that would be the one that would take care of any
Ambulance service?
Yep. Any equipment or anything like that.
Ideally.
And before Dan goes, because he's got a few of them, just to let everybody know that the planning board is proposing to increase the weight limit for home-based businesses that are going to have a vehicle to the weight of 26,000 pounds, which will put it just under a Class B commercial. just under a Class B commercial vehicle, because of the, some of the vehicles that are bigger, the duallys, the, and whatnot, that people are using, say, for, somebody brought it up earlier, a plowing business, that they put their logos on the side or whatever, so that they can park them at their house and establish, to be able to register them at their addresses. So we've been running into that issue on the planning board, so that's going to be coming up as a warrant article. All right, the floor is yours, Dan.
Jim, you got your pen ready? Just kidding, I'll type these up and I'll send them to you. I will.
Let's talk.
I'll type them up. All right, so let's go here. To see if the town will vote to approve the deposit of 50K into a recreation revolving account to hire a recreation coordinator and to plan senior and child programs. So that is the first one. And then funding to come from the unassigned fund balance.
And we had already talked about that.
Exactly. Next one is to see if the town will vote to approve the deposit of 100K into the highway department revolving fund to purchase a six-wheel dump truck and other tools, funds to come from-
Right, so that's the revolving fund that we're going to establish.
The only pushback I'd give you on that is, don't be so specific as to-
I want to say truck, though.
I, I don't know if I'd want to say truck, I'd, I'd, the way I see it is, and we've talked about this one ad nauseam too, right, is that in the future, we're eventually going to have to go our own way with highway as well. And I, I think your intent is, this, this is to kind of start us off in that, and if we had a revolving of fund that could be used-
I would be, I would be vehicles and equipment, like Mike stated when he was up there, because you're going to need sanders, you're going to need plows, you're going to need all kinds of other equipments.
I'll use vehicles and equipment.
Yeah, we might, you know, we might not be buying a truck tomorrow, but-
No.
But in the future-
Right.
We can, you know, just like the fire apparatus or the police cruisers thing, this would be a-
Sure.
-highway equipment.
My next one is to see if the town will vote to approve the deposit of 250K into the highway paving line. The next verbiage, I'm not positive of how to use it, and you and Mike talked about it a little bit, like, it's, it's to get more paving done on the roads, but how do we word it where it doesn't sound clunky? You know, I don't want it to say to pave more roads. Like, that's not, you know what I mean? Like, that just doesn't sound right, so. Mike, you got any idea?
We talked-
At Mike. We already talked.
Mike, it was to try to help you get caught up, right?
We're trying to, we're trying to get more.
And that's kind of where we weren't so elegant as you probably are with words.
I don't know what elegant is, but-
I only have this much room. I only have this much room.
Okay.
Every time I think elegant, I think I'm like-
This is the first time I've really had a board, we've had individuals over there pro-highway, so I appreciate it, okay?
Sure.
But I don't think we want to oversaturate-
This is the year of highway, buddy.
Okay, and I'm not going to fight it, listen, I'm not going to fight it, but if I'm putting a bond in for roadwork, right, and I have a pretty good pulse of the voters here in town, for the most part, when they close the curtain and they go in the booth, if there's three or four warrant articles that say highway-
Yeah, you're getting hosed.
He's getting a little greedy. I, I, I'm not, I'm just standing here at the podium telling you that I, I have little reservation, I'm all on board for it, and we'll go for it. But there's a saying, pigs get fat and hogs get slaughtered.
I get it. But the highway department, when I got here, has been neglected. No, I'm not, you know what? Not the highway department, the paving line-
Okay.
-has been neglected.
No, no doubt. But what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm going to put a warrant in for a bond for paving, right?
Yep.
And then we're going to do this for paving.
This is a fail-safe.
So let's use the word, and the highway department is drastically underfunded, I've done this for a long time, and I've done my spiel for a long time. So maybe the verbiage on this is for road improvements and upgrades.
There you go.
Not paving, because we're going to beat the pave, it's going to be for paving, I'm not trying to play a shell game.
Right.
But we're going to oversaturate that word paving.
And, and we should note that this would be zero tax impact, right?
Right.
And that's key.
That's going to be a key part of this.
Well, Matt, you and I have gone for a long time. We've done zero-impact warrant articles.
Yeah.
And they see a dollar amount in it, and for some reason they get tired reading the warrant article.
Yeah.
There's a dollar amount, no.
Yeah, right.
They don't get to the bottom.
And that's the intent would be-
Road improvement and upgrades.
I think that would be-
Okay.
-better verbiage for that.
Right. I agree.
Is that a warrant or an increase to a budget line?
A warrant.
A warrant.
Okay, we, it looks to me like we have an established revolving fund called Highway Construction, does that sound familiar at all?
Highway revolving construction, what's the other?
Highway Construction Revolving Fund.
There's two.
Okay.
You know, what's the verbiage on the other one?
I don't-
There is another one.
Oh, Road Systems Improvements.
Okay, that one is one that was established a long time ago, and to be completely candid, standing here, that, that's for an absolute dire tragedy emergency.
That's if you have a road washout.
Yeah, something that FEMA's not going to fund us, or maybe we get reimbursed from FEMA.
Sure.
But we have funds available to deal with that.
Like 108, if it was your road when it washed out.
Correct.
I believe the last time-
And that's what that is. So the first one you said, that's a revolving fund, all the block rate money goes into.
Okay. The Road Systems Improvement, it looks like a capital reserve-
It is.
-has $117,000 in it.
The last time we used that fund-
Want to add to that? No, I don't want it to go in that one.
No, but I think we leave that as is, because that's the rainy day, emergency, have no funds left, it's got to be fixed tomorrow.
We, we used that several years ago when we had a washout, I think it was Wilders Grove Road had to be redone.
I've never used that, I've never tapped it-
Well, I think it was before your time.
Well, that was 16 years ago.
Yeah, that's when that thing was last used.
Not a few years ago.
It was 16 years ago.
We're just like yesterday for Joe.
Sure, no, I-
Didn't they done that?
So, you done yet, Tim?
No, I got one more. Are you serious?
And I'm all, all on board with these guys.
No, 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 I don't have one more highway one, we're done with that.
Now he's on board.
All right. We good, but language works.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll clean it up a little bit more, send it off to Jim.
What's the last one?
So the last one, so, I don't know if you guys are aware or not, our town clerk gets paid by fees that she collects.
Yes.
She's one of the last, how many did you say? Two or three?
Maybe, yeah.
That still do that. She doesn't have a salary paid for by the town, it's paid through fees. She wants it to, she would like for it to be a salary line, and then the fees go to the town, for budgeting reasons. So it's like, it's going to be a wash, do you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, no, I get it. So the funds are coming to the town regardless as-
Right, so-
As revenue, and then we're just paying out-
Expenses.
Yes. A regular salary.
So how we word that, Jim, you wanted a dollar amount on there?
No, in consultation with the tax collector clerk.
Yeah, you just want to be very careful how you word it.
A dollar?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it written up, but it's written a certain way, so.
We'll get the crane to go over that for you.
I did, backed it up a few years to see what it was. Some years I make less-
Sure.
-than the year before, which is like stupid, why would somebody make less money than they did the year before? So, and I never know what I'm going to make from week to week, I have no idea what I'm going to make. I do know I'm going to get a $5,000 thing yearly from clerk, and a $10,000 pay, $10,000 a year pay from tax collector, that's what I know for sure. I don't know anything else for sure. Being paid like this, there is no retirement involved, there's really no benefits involved, I do get health. Not so much for me, but for my predecessor, whoever comes along is not going to do this job for that, because they get no retirement, I've been working for 20 years without retirement, okay, which at the time wasn't a big deal, because, you know, had a husband that had a good job in retirement, but. If you want to put a dollar on there, last year I made $60,472, I think, or 42. The prior year I made $4 more than that. If you want to put a dollar amount on there, because I also want an increase on the tax collector side, $65,000.
So, so I'm all for, like, stealing shamelessly. Is there one of your town clerks you could reach out to who put that on?
I did.
No, she did, that's what I said.
So you, so we have wording that we can pick up and-
I have it written up a certain way, I just was trying to explain it-
Yeah.
-better than me saying, pursuant to provisions RSA, I mean, that's-
Yeah, right, right, right.
More difficult to understand.
You talk like that all the time.
It is written up to be a warrant.
Yeah, because you're always scared if you word it the wrong way, then we can't pay you anything.
So all we got to do is drop-
It's worded, yeah.
Just drop in her dollar figure into that warrant article that you have.
And that would be the figure.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, does that, in that warrant article, so when she goes to that, those fees will automatically dissolve, or does something have to be said or done about that?
She'll take care of that, the way she does her, her little sheet, every day.
So it'll just come in as income?
Yeah, exactly, it'll come as income, as revenue. She just has to-
The money I take in on a daily basis is broken down immediately into fees.
Right.
It's written up, how, what I did, how much is fees, and it, that's the way it's broken down. I will maybe report it still that way, but my payroll won't be done that way, because now I have to sit there and pick all the fees out and add them all up-
Right.
-and put them in a pay sheet. So, it'll be reported the same way, but my fee being paid, I'm not going to give you a fee thing and say, this is what I made, give me money. I'm just going to get a paycheck.
Yep.
Right, I was just saying, for the financial-
Yeah, it, it will come in the same way, she'll know where to put it, if she needs to put it in a certain spot, everything's going to stay the same, it's just how it turns around to come back in my pocket, or clerk pocket.
Okay.
Whoever, not just me.
Thank you, I'm Jay. Jim?
We should all bear in mind that the fees that are currently being paid to the collector clerk, clerk collector, will go into the revenue. So you actually have almost an entire offset to the request.
Right, and that's what I was saying, is that it's pretty much a, it's, it's a wash.
But it'll keep the consistent pay-
Exactly, for her.
-and not fluctuate for the person doing the job.
Right. So the revenues that, excuse me, the fees that are now being paid will become revenues.
Correct.
Right.
So the net is what you may have to explain to the, to the voters at some point in time, which again is negligible.
So how many is that at for warrants?
Before Dan?
Dan's got crazy.
Well, after, after the exiting and adding-
We have a Dan list and we don't have a-
Dan's doing his own separate warrants.
Going to be a third ballot.
Dan's ballot.
We went from 14 to 18, no, it's going to be 12 to 18, so we added six tonight.
Last year, I think we're at 19, what was it?
20.
20, yeah.
So we'd be down two.
Yeah, we'd be down.
But we also took some off, does that include the ones that were taken off?
They removed three.
Yeah, that's why we're down at 18.
You were going to reconsider number four.
And you have two number twos.
Thank you.
True.
Right, you're still deliberating on the police cruiser and equipment, $25,000 in the capital reserve request. And for draft warrant number eight, we're going to eliminate that and only put it on future warrants when there's a new social service agency-
Right, yes.
-that's to be added to this list, so now we're down to 17. Touch your paper. Okay.
Didn't we also get rid of seven?
The Cisterns.
We put it as a draft.
Seven wasn't Cisterns, seven was the Emergency Management Revolving Fund one.
That one we did get rid of, yep.
Seven we got rid of, nine we got rid of, 10 we got rid of.
The Cisterns we left on there for now, for the draft.
Yeah, because you guys don't have a lot to talk about.
So we're down to a reasonable number of warrants.
Yeah, I guess in the grand scheme of things, the, the other thing I would point out is, where, if we have a lot of warrants, the intention of the board is to make them zero tax impact.
Exactly.
So, it'll, it'll be digested differently by the voter, right? So when they-
And we'll have to make sure that that is stressed in where it gets out, that although there is a lot of warrants, to please note that they are of no impact. And that we're just looking for their approval so that we can withdraw that money-
Yep.
-from the-
Unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, unafund-
Unassigned fund.
Unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, somebody here can talk tonight. Okay, so very good. Well, Jim was struggling, I'm struggling, doesn't make us bad, guys. Joe, I believe you are up for approvals.
Well, before we go to that-
Okay.
-can we just get on the, the public record that the current unassigned fund balance is $2,397,993 directly from the DRA last Thursday.
And as stated, because of that amount, that's hence, with inflation in the budget going up to try to, from what we've seen, there's, there'll be a huge difference, that that's why we're taking this money out of that fund, so that hopefully the budget, we can get the budget passed, it, less of an impact to the taxpayers by using all this other money out of the unassigned fund balance, and minimize the impact. And if anybody really wants to go out there, if they check around some of the other towns, they're going to hear a sad song of woes, because of the impacts that these other towns are having. And we're doing our due diligence to try to minimize that, so that we're not like those other towns.
And so that we're, we're on Zoom? There we are. We're on Zoom. The tax rate for the municipal portion last year, in this year, is $3.73. DRA has established next year's tax rate at $3.63, down 10 cents from last year.
To start with, and we're still waiting to hear from the school.
School's been set. $18.25. That's up from $16.61.
Right. So before Joe goes, I know, like, this wasn't on the agenda, last night the planning board for the town of Newton met, and legal counsel was involved in a couple of, in one issue in particular, and the board wasn't aware that they would be able to retroactively give a, an extend, a six-month extension, because the client was looking to get certain certifications approved by the state in our zoning board. So, as per our own legal counsel, we were advised that we could retroactivate it, do it, and with a written request for a withdrawal, which they had already done, they're going to be submitting that to the planning board. We are going to be able to refund the money that they put in for that because they have already paid for it. So this is a no-brainer. It's just giving back the client their money that they are entitled to and that we do not need to hold on to this for an extended time. And so the planning board is sent to the selectmen, a letter recommending that the board of selectmen refund the application fees for the reapplication for a four-building site plan on lot 14-1-27-3 in the amount of $750. The plan has been withdrawn. Like I said, it's contingent that they will receive the money once we receive the signed letter stating such. So they just need our approval so that they can put it in when that happens. So like I said, it's not our money. We're just giving it back. So there's really no need to even discuss it. We just need to put our stamp of approval on it. So with that being said, I need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
That would be Joe, a seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that would be unanimous. Thank you. You're up, Joe.
This woman in the back.
Sorry, do I know you?
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
So I was just asking Mary Jo when the tax bills will come out, and she estimates that they will be coming out on Monday.
Oh, very good.
Somebody knows.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
So the next item on the agenda is to approve the 2023 tax warrants submitted by the tax collector, and there's a document for you to sign associated with that. So we would need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Motion to approve the 2023 tax warrant.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous.
The next item is a resignation from Bruce Guessler from the Newton Fire Department, effective December 23, 2023.
I move to consider, to reconsider motion, selectman Joe Simone, move to instruct the trustees of the trust fund to withdraw $3,613 to pay an invoice to Fence Pro from the town building capital reserve fund, seconded by Selectman Burrell.
So at your last meeting, you did make this motion to pay the fence company out of the capital reserve fund. Right after the meeting, I met with the treasurer, and she indicated to me that the check had already been about to be sent out. It's been on the manifest approved. So it's just a different source of the funding, but we don't want to create a record that's inaccurate. So you need to reconsider your motion from the last meeting, as Joe just read. The seconded needs to agree to it, which was Matt, and then you just simply say it's been paid out of the general fund. There's no need to go to the capital reserve for town buildings.
Yep. We understand.
So Joe, you just made a motion to reconsider. Matt is the seconded?
And now we need a second.
I can second that.
Thank you. And so the question's back up on the table, and it's withdrawn by me.
All right.
Awesome.
Thank you.
No thank you. Joe?
Moving on to the minutes. I move to approve and accept the public minute meeting, public meeting minutes dated November 15, 2023, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I move to approve and accept the non-public meeting minutes dated November 15, 2023, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Yep. And then we have budget review.
So you have in your books an updated budget. It's updated in format and has the amounts that were discussed at the last meeting. Thank you to Diane for throwing this together for us.
Yes, Ms. Diane Moran stepped up and was very helpful in expediting this matter. So the town would like to give its thanks to her.
Withstanding.
Listen, we want her to hang around. We need her.
So no sense going line by line. I'll share with you a big-ticket item I neglected to include in the budget, $130,000 for the Trinity Pride Star contract, which you guys executed, and it starts March 1, 2021. So it has to go somewhere in our budget, the most, 2024?
Yes.
What year are we in now?
Stop hanging out with some of these guys.
And the 2024 budget needs to have that $130,000. The most logical place would be somewhere in the fire department's budget. And there is a line for a consultant. It's the third line down in the fire department budget, consultant services. It currently has $1,500 with zero expended in the current year. I would recommend that we placed $130,000 in that line, being the most appropriate to capture the rationale for the money.
In what you said, the contracted services?
Consultant.
Consultant and support?
Fire Department, third line down.
Yep. I'm looking at the wrong one again.
What page, Jim?
We have some modest housekeeping things that we have to follow up with Peyton on. Some lines have been added to the 2024 budget by department heads, but they lack an account number, so Peyton will be responsible for assigning the account numbers to those lines. And I guess the other high-level thing I wanted to discuss with you is employee wages now and prospective employees. We want to have a little discussion on. For background purposes, the board asked every department to come in with an honest budget that they felt they needed to run their department. Included within that budget was to be wage adjustments that reward current employees for good performance and also to recruit and retain future employees. So that was the rationale that was, I guess, shared with the department heads. So of all the presentations, I'm sure everybody had a different thought in mind because you were presenting them, building them as an island, so to speak.
Yep.
And now you have a multitude of islands to choose from or choose a different course.
So I guess my overall question is, and I'm looking at this, that right now, as we sit here tonight, there's a 12.10% difference between the proposed and the default, right? I'm reading this correctly?
So don't go by that.
Don't go by that. Lower or higher?
The default's going to come up a good amount, but so is the proposed because we just, going over all this, the Trinity isn't in there, right? This welfare thing we just did, that's not in. So that's almost $200,000. That's both sides.
Right, so.
So, and then there's some other stuff that the numbers aren't right in there yet. So it's, if you want me to hit it, the groundwork for the landscaping.
Yeah, right, right.
All the insurance, the FICA, the health, all that stuff, the hauling, the disposal, that stuff's not in there. It's in there, but it's not where it's supposed to be.
Yep.
Because their contract went up.
So I guess where I'm going with this is, we all know that, was it, was it 14% last year? I'm trying to remember what it was. Whatever the difference was, the proposed failed last year, right? We went to a default. You know, I feel as though the proposed last year, nothing has really changed in a year, you know? I would ask anybody out there, are prices going down and stuff that you're buying? Like, is, you still need to pay a lot of money for fuel? You still need to pay a lot of money for insurance, for wages? If you're hiring people, wages, if you're working somewhere, you want more in wages? So it's like, we're going to go out there essentially with the same message and essentially with the same proposed first default, and it failed last year. And I'm afraid it's going to fail again. So one of the options that Jim kind of alluded to was, you know, we could turn around and we could take out the wage increases from the proposed, and we could capture those as a cost of living adjustment warrant article. We already, I already said we have too many warrant articles, but what the heck? Put another one in there where we could call it out to people. And to me, I don't think that should be a zero tax impact. I think that has to be a tax impact.
Yeah.
And basically turn around and, and I'm more of a merit guy. I'm not an across-the-board guy, but, but when you're talking about, it's going to be a year, people didn't get raises this year, you know, then, then a cost of living adjustment is probably warranted, no pun intended, because I, I'm, most people listening to this right now, if they work somewhere, they probably got a cost of living adjustment this year, you know? So our people should get it too. So, so I guess where I'm going with this is, one of the things we could do is we could keep all the wage budget line items in every department flat, right? So flat as opposed, you know, flat to what it was last year, and then capture in a warrant article what those wage increases would be and put it out there in front of people and say, hey, look, we know we're going up, but you, you have to understand, part of this is protecting services because we want to retain people, and here it is right in front of you, you know? Vote no. Last year, you probably didn't know, though, when you voted no for the proposed, you weren't going to give people raises. You know, this year, we'll put it in front of them and say, here it is, you know? I don't know how much that gets us in terms of the offset, but maybe it's a strategy, so.
And I'll note, because of that, the pay and the increases, that our own Robin Spocks, who was just hired for the Board of Selectmen, was hired, she hit the ground running. She's been doing a tremendous job in the position. She's been learning and growing, and because of the fact that we did what we had to do pay-wise to attract people like Robin to be able to come in here and perform at the level that she has, is the importance of what we're talking about here. So without her, we would have fallen short, and with that, we appreciate her, and this is why we're putting this to you, the voters.
So I fall on Matt's side originally, right, with merit increases being at the individual My own personal opinion is that if we're going to have to figure out, we're going to have to figure out a way to increase people, whether it goes on the warrant article or here, right? But we're saying to department heads, you need to own your budget, but then we're going to go and do something else, right? And we all think, I'll be honest with you, budgeting, we need to get better at budgeting every year, right? That's my personal opinion. Not all departments, but several, and we got to manage within those budgets.
Mike, do you?
I struggle with going to a warrant article. I understand it, but that's, the reason being is, is when you do a budget, you own that budget.
Yep. Did you have something you wanted to say, Mike?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just an suggestion.
Yep. Anybody else have any other comments?
The only thing I'd just add is, I'm hoping people are watching this, whether it be, you know, two weeks from now on YouTube or, you know, on the replay on cable, because you can see we're trying here, you know what I mean? And we've been trying for a year, and stuff costs more. It does. Like, like I said, we're not, it's not unique to us. I mean, it's not, this stuff is not unique to your family's budget, you know? And we're trying to retain people, and it's, people can write their own ticket in municipalities in a lot of ways right now. If you've got skills, there's probably a town out there looking for it, and if you don't mind a longer commute or whatever, you can probably find an opportunity, you know? And, and it's, it's a game out there of who can offer the most money, right, to get people? So I don't know what the answer is, and I'll say it again, I said it last week, is, you know, if you want to blame somebody, blame somebody like me, where I was, you know, Mike's pointing to me, yeah, me. So, you know, I said it last week, right, Mike, is I sat up here and previous boards, and I said, oh, let's keep it right around 4%. So, you know, it'll be palatable for people, and then Mike's a department head up here saying, hey, I'll, I'll do the roads with whatever you give me, but eventually, you're going to run into something. And what did we run into? We ran into historical inflation, you know? We ran into stuff, we didn't have a crystal ball, you know? And, and here we are. And we're trying. And like I said earlier, there, nobody's in this room right now, you know? It's just department heads. And we need people, if they have ideas, bring them forward, you know? What's, what's the secret? Is there a secret sauce that we don't know about?
And to what Matt just said, I'll also add this. We're not sitting here and just telling you that we've needed to add, add, and add. We have gone through the budgets, and there have been cuts in other areas to where maybe we, we found that we could trim a little bit of fat that we haven't, as of lately, been using as much money in those line items, so that we're trying to help offset that increase, but we can only do so much, as Matt's talking about, because of that record inflation, so.
May I ask a clarifying question? If we've hired someone at a higher rate than what was budgeted for 2022, that's what we're working with, should the newer rate be reflected as an actual expense when calculating? It's staying in the budget? It can appear to be a raise when it's really not. It was the higher.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
I mean, you make a good point that it's not just retaining people by giving them raises, but it's if you were running short of somebody, since he's standing right there, I'll say the highway department, he's been short a person for two years, right? So you need to have that reflected in your budget, that you're going to need a compatible wage to give to that person that wasn't necessarily in your default, you know? So there might be a couple of departments like that, you know, where we can't, we can tell everybody to go flat again, but then those department heads need to say to us, except for, you know, I'm short a person, so that can't stay flat. I need to go up that wage, you know?
One of the more glaring examples is the fact that the finance position has been vacant for almost 12 months.
Yeah, right.
Almost 12 months.
Yeah.
We're on a hot lead now, so I'm optimistic at the next meeting, I'll be bringing forth a candidate for your consideration, but that's an example of what we're dealing with when we are not an attractive employer.
So really quick math, just so you guys know, like, just blasted through it, 263,000. That's the amount of wage increase that we made. And it was really quick. I probably didn't hit them all, so.
Round number.
Yeah, that's, I just, I would spend more time on it, but that's what I came up with really quickly. Mike, yours specifically? So you put in there 74,000? Is that going from the part-time guy to a full-time second guy? Or what, I guess where I'm going is, what is that?
How did I get to that number?
There we go.
Well, it's going to be twofold. In order to bring, again, being attractive.
No, no, we're not.
That, that's the word we're going to use. Entice somebody to come to work here. What the going rate is for a part-timer with a CDL, will, I will have to increase the foreman's rate now in order to keep it proportional.
Right.
So that's what it's done. It's up his rate.
But you're looking to hire a full-time, right?
Well, not a full-time. I'll take.
Well, it's going to be twofold. In order to bring, again, being attractive.
No, no, no.
That, that's the word we're going to use.
Sure.
Entice somebody to come to work here. What, what the going rate is for a part-timer with a CDL will, I will have to increase the formans rate now.
Yep.
In order to keep it proportional.
Right.
So that's what it's done. It's up his rate.
But you're looking to hire a full-time, right?
Well, not a full-timer. I'll take a part-timer. A full-timer would be fantastic. That gets more problematic because then we're going to pay into the retirement and so forth and so on. So if I can get a full-timer at a rate that I'm pretty sure I can bring him on board with and increase Ronnie's salary.
So that's what I guess I'm getting at. You had, what did I say, 74, 74,600, right?
Correct.
That's like, you already had money in there from the previous budget cycles, even though we didn't hire anybody, right?
But it, it, if you, I think you've got it in, I'm doing it from memory.
No, no, I get it, I get it.
I think over the past two years, when you look at the budget, I only ended up with like $24,000 left.
Right. After you paid.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
So there really wasn't enough.
So there wasn't enough in there anyways to fund the part-timer if we actually got one.
You are correct.
Okay. That makes more sense.
That's why we didn't get nobody to work.
Right.
Well, it was just, I'm like, what is he trying to do here?
I know, if you look at the increase, you got to look at what I've spent and then you're going to say, oh, there wasn't enough.
I see what you're saying. So, so if you did hire somebody, you would have, that line would have been negative. We would have taken out a payback.
I'd have to pull it out of some other line item and still stay at my 405.
Yeah.
Right.
I got you.
Robin, Peter to pay Paul.
I get it.
Yeah.
So just, just taking up where you left off, 260,000 and the differential right now is 557,000, right?
Yep.
So, so if we were to take that out, granted, you know, it's around.
It may not be that much, it may come down.
And we might have to put some more back in there for what like Mike's saying, you know, roughly you're looking at still about 300,000 more.
Right, but you would be.
Yeah, it's about 50/50, right? So I mean, that would improve our 12% by, you know, might be a 6%.
Right.
Seven percent.
So that 260 represents what?
The salary increases.
Right.
I just blasted through.
From the default.
Yeah, 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 no, no, I get it, right? So, but you take the 260, you take it out and all you're doing is saying.
You're putting it on warrant.
It's going to go over here.
Not really, because I don't think, it's not going to shake out to be 260,000 when you do whatever it is, three and a half percent times all your salary lines. I don't think you're going to get 260,000.
But you probably still, so let's say you hit 150, 170.
It's in the ballpark.
Right?
That's the warrant.
Right, so again, I get it and would get to the, the employees to that, but it's some, you know, and sorry, it's the business side of it. At some point, it's just putting in a little different line item. We're not changing our need at all.
And that is correct.
Yeah.
No, no, you're right.
Yeah.
You're right.
That's correct. The, you know, the goal there is, like I said, is to spotlight it, you know, so people understand, you know, this is what's going on.
You wanted to say something else, Mike?
Yeah, I'll do it now, because it's just a, kind of a summary and a suggestion. You've hit on it, I think every one of you guys tonight, Jim's hit on it. How many people in this, in the room right now?
Not on the payroll.
Deliberative? Yeah, not on payroll, right?
Plenty of good seats available.
Deliberative won't be an awful lot different.
Right.
Right? Those are the two bites of the apple that we rarely have before they go into a booth.
Right.
I would strongly suggest this year, we spend some time and we don't have a lot of time, but put a voter guide into the Carriage Town News twice. Put it once before deliberative, because the warrants, we're restricted on how the warrants read due to DRA's language.
Right.
You want explanation.
Correct. They're not very user-friendly.
Right.
It's kind of a riddle and a rhyme mixed into a number. A lot of people don't really.
Well, technically, you could take all that money that you need out of all the postage lines that we don't use.
Again, are you sponsored by?
Listen, listen, I think he works part-time for the post office. Could we check on that, please?
So Mike, just a suggestion, and I really think it warrants a strong look at.
So we don't even have to do the Carriage Town. You can do a direct mail.
Okay.
He's going to postage again.
No, I'm just saying you don't.
We actually, we actually do do a voter's guide every year, but you're.
But how does it go out?
It goes out, it's handouts and online on the website.
Okay.
It doesn't work. It needs to be mailed, but if we do a direct mail, it'll go to every single person's mailbox.
That's the important part. Now, we could do a percentage, it could go to every house in town and 25% of them are going in the trash anyhow. You're not going to log in, it's going to go in the trash.
It's the coverage.
It, and that's, that's what we lack every year. There's not a lot of voter participation in any of these budget meetings. Not at deliberative session.
Communication.
Yeah. And I strongly believe if they're educated on, for example, the school budget went up, operating budget went down, a little bit. I'm talking about the tax.
Schools' tax rate went up, our tax rate went down.
Went down, correct. That's what I meant to say.
That's the headline on the voter's guide, by the way.
You're writing it already.
Yeah. So a lot of it needs to just be spelled out for folks that they can read it in, in an understandable language and say, yep, I get it.
Hey, man, I agree.
No offense, Matt.
Candidates, I said we need to do it.
We take the lawyers out of the language. No offense.
Yeah, none too.
But you're going to write it without the lawyer language.
Very easily understandable explanation.
Two lines, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, you can't oversaturate it, but the warrants, the budget, just a one sheet highlight.
Well, you put the, the way that I've done voter guides before is you put the warrant as read on there and then below you put explanation, what this means.
Yeah, that's what we do.
This money's going for this. This is what this is going to do and this is why we're in favor of it.
And, and like, like I said earlier, we do do all of that. You're just talking about getting it, the penetration level.
Yeah. I think over the past number of years, and I don't know what the number of years is, 10, 12, whatever, that's what we lack.
Yeah.
We lack the saturation of people being educated when they go to the booth and they put in their vote for whatever that is.
Yep.
Some people cram like it's a test the day before.
Yeah, right, right.
Oh, what is this? What is this? Call a friend, phone a friend. What do they mean?
Yeah.
Really?
Yep.
Don't forget to post it out there.
No, but that's a good idea and if we are going to do that, let's face the thing is to be able to submit it and then have it put in the paper takes at least two weeks. By the time they get it, then it'll normally be in the other one, so we don't have long to pretty much get this together and get in.
And timing is everything too.
Yep, exactly.
Don't put it out too early.
Right. Put it out just before so it's fresh in their minds.
Yeah, and I would say twice, once before the deliberative.
And then once after.
Once again, just prior to the.
To voting, yeah.
Don't forget your favorite.
Just a thought.
Facebook page, whatever, because that usually stirs up a lot of discussions.
And you know I'm all about Facebook.
That's what I have. That's why I looked right here.
But Mike, I'm glad you brought that up. I was.
I knew you were thinking about it, you still know how to get it out. I know.
Thank you.
My phone's allergic to Facebook. Chief, you heard something?
We could also have the newer selectmen knock on doors.
Yes.
The new guy.
Good evening.
I'm the interim police chief. I'm probably going to tell you something you've heard all along from everyone else. I understand what you're trying to do with the warrant article, where you're putting the money and going to have people vote on it. What happens if, if that gets defeated?
Then we, it's like going to a default, basically.
I'm going to be blatantly honest with you here. In my short time here, we're, we're really struggling to keep the guys and girls that we have right now working. If we don't get them a raise, it is way too easy for them to go anywhere. And I'm, you mentioned like further drive. If the drivers from here to East Kingston or Plastow, whatever you want.
Yep.
They can go there right now and without a raise, and I know it's not always about the money, there's other things, but these folks are struggling, they're looking for a raise. If that gets defeated, I honestly don't know what, well, I do know what could happen. We could lose a number of people and then trying to fill that. Right now, the town of Newton is competing with people who are hiring 10, 15, $20,000 hiring bonuses just to come to your PD. They're going to pay you another 20, $30,000. We can't compete with that based on what I'm seeing in the budget. So I understand budgets, I understand money, I understand tax rates and everything else, but I, I think we're really taking a chance on this one that we're going to get voted no on that warrant article and we're going to struggle after that.
So, you know, look, you've been at this for a while in other towns, right? So I do respect your opinion. Do you think if you were in one of these seats, would you be asking for it to be warrant article or do you want to see it in the budget?
To me, it's got to go in the budget. I just think we've justified it. I think, and if there's more questions, we can justify it at the deliberative session. At least we can, we can argue that it's warranted type of expenditure. And in this day and age, that's what's keeping people working. You put it out on a warrant article and Mike's absolutely right. You close that curtain, what they said two minutes ago doesn't matter when the pen goes away.
Oh, I get it. I get it.
And based on last year going into the default budget, and again, I'm just looking at some of your figures right now, are we a half a million dollars difference? Is that?
Yeah, it's half a million.
Yeah, right now, the figures are about a half a million.
And last year was a little higher than that.
Yeah.
You know what, people, they're going to read and go, no. And I don't think it's going to change on that warrant article either. Now, we're all adults here, we understand what, what could happen, but this could be, this could be difficult for the PD, to be honest with you. They're staying there right now, some of your employees, because they're loyal to the town of Newton.
Sure.
And that's pretty good to have when the time comes, is that these guys are staying and they're working because they like where they work. Eventually, it's just going to be too much. And we already have at least two guys looking elsewhere right now and it's the money. So it's my opinion, I think it's a pretty valid one, to be honest with you, and we'll do the best we can with, with the money end up giving us. We'll get, we'll give you the most professional police department we can, but I, I got to have bodies to run it.
Sure.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, don't leave that. In the, in the police department, I chatted with the chief earlier, when he carries his default amount into his new budget, he's lowered that amount. So his wage line included wage increases, but overall it's down like 3.4%.
Well, it went down 1.4, it went down $8,000. The, the default budget and the one I proposed this, this year with the raises went down $8,000.
Right.
So, I mean, that's to me is just doing better math and taking care of business. So we'll actually lose money if it goes to a default. So does, does that, does that help?
I just wanted to make the point with that's, that's at least one scenario that's different in the town, where you actually looked across literally and said, I'm going to return $50,000 hypothetically at the end of this year. Why don't I want to carry that into next year, but I want to use some of the full wage increases? That's the best way I can summarize it.
Yep, yep.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So. Lots of tall people around here. What you're saying is you're going to go through the budgets.
Excuse me, what's your name?
Excuse me?
Your name?
Oh, James Doggett.
Thank you.
What you're proposing is to go through the budgets and flatline them to last year's salary lines?
To start.
Okay.
That's if we were to do it via the warrant.
Yeah.
We did the warrant.
And what would you be proposing as a cost of living increase? Because before we get to that, those salary lines from last year for a lot of the little departments have already been overshot. So if you have people go back to basically the 2023 salary line. They're already, yeah. You come up and say, okay, you're going to be getting four and a half percent as a cost of living increase on that salary line. It's not going to cover what was expended in 2023, let alone allow for any increase in 2024. Now, I know I've lived in town for a long time and Newton for the fire department and the police department has always been almost a training, where, where, in sports they have.
Springboard.
What happens is people come here, they get their training, they satisfy their contract and then they move usually within 20 miles of here and get a major pay increase.
Yep.
You're going to see that happening with the people in the smaller departments.
But that's what we've been talking about. That's what we get.
Well, no, people like me, I grew up in Newton, Newton's my town. I could go somewhere else and get between $10 and $15 more per hour for running that office.
And that's what we're trying to impress to the people out there, Jim.
Well, but what will happen is that if you put it out as a warrant article and that warrant article fails, that means that the little people, because my salary isn't much for this town, but it means that, you know, that'll be two years without, and my budget is going to be thoroughly screwed because a lot of what I do and what some, a lot of other people in this room do is statutorily required. It's not like we can say, okay, we're going to take, you know, four hours off of our weekly schedule. We don't have that option, just like the police can't say, well, you know, we'll only put one cruiser out on a Saturday night when they normally have two. You've got to be really careful what you do and make sure that, you know, you as the, the selectman, because I was once one of you, this is where, you know, you need, you guys need to get out there and push for things, you know?
We got you, you're doing it right now.
Yeah, I real, I realize that, but we, you know, the leadership in the town needs to really, really push for things more than just, you know, at meetings with the, in front of the public.
We understand that, Jim, and that's why we've been having.
I'm, I'm just cautioning.
I know.
Because if you do, if you do that to my budgets, it's going to, you know, we're going to end up, I'll be standing up here going, yes, I, you know, I finally got the ZBA budget out of the red into the black. It's going to be back in the red and so makes you feel like you're kind of hitting your head against the wall.
Oh, I get it.
So I would sum this up by saying we have a few options, none of them are good. So we need the best of the bad options is what it comes down to. And I, I just heard the chief say it is, this is probably going to a default if we put it out the way this is. And I know we still have to tweak it a little bit, but we're probably going to a default. Are we prepared to do that? Are we prepared to put it out there? And Jim, Jim makes a good point, you know, sell it more. I'm, I'm skeptical about how much more would work, you know? We, we can, we can do a lot, but if people are unengaged, those are typically the people who vote with their wallet and they're, they're going to see the school on the same day, you know? So like I said, what's the best bad option we want to go with, you know?
I'm out.
You know, and I, and I would add, you know, what is today, the 29th? Yeah. So November 29th, this is going to be archived, right? In our YouTube channel? So for, for all the people who, you know, will, won't start paying attention until a couple of weeks from now, not even a couple of weeks, probably after the holidays, right? This is the meeting you should pull up, you know? This is the 11/29 BOS meeting and this is where we're hashing it out. And I don't know what the answer is. we're hashing it out. And I don't know what the answer is. We've, years past, like I was alluding to, we might have, and Jim was on some of those boards, we might have sat there and said, you know what? Cross the board. We wanna go from, what did we say? We're at 12%? Something like that?
Yeah, roughly.
We might have a target, and we might say, oh, let's make it so it only goes up six percent or seven percent. So you do the math, and you tell, everybody cut your budget by five percent, right? So now it's more palatable. The problem is, you do that, and you're still behind, and it doesn't get any better next year, you know?
Well, I mean, if anybody's been paying attention, um, because of the inflation or whatever, last year's proposed buzz, budget, um, was an increase of basically about seven hundred thousand dollars. This year, we went back, like I said earlier, as a board and the department heads, we trimmed some of the other areas to where maybe at one point or another, we might have spent extra money for those things, but as it's panning out, we haven't been spending quite as much money in those areas, so we've cut those. But also the other part is, as we're sitting here talking about, now this is two years in advance of, um, pay with salary increases, and we've managed to cut last year's proposed budget. It's gonna be, I believe, um, in excess of a little over two hundred thousand dollars. So we've done what we can on our end of it, um, with that, and then also by, with the warrant articles, funding the extra money that's needed to put into some of those safety valves or other line item budgets, um, at no cost to the taxpayers. So, you know, for the townspeople, and all of us are one of them, um, as far as what we sit here, it's a, it's a win-win for everybody, and this, this puts us back in the game so that we can give to the townspeople the services, um, that they require, what they're paying for, what they're looking for, what their families need, um, to, and to have everything, you know, taken care of so that the town is not lacking for anything. I mean, and that's just it in a nutshell. We have to, we have to, at some point, like Matt said, we've been stuck in the past, and here it is. This is the year 2023 coming into 2024. We need to get up current in the year 2024. We can't live in the salary, um, line items back in the mid twenties, right? 2015, 2016. We need to increase those up. We need to come up into the year 2024. And everybody out there, if they honestly go and they look in the mirror, because they know from their own experiences with their own jobs, that they've been looking for pay increases, that you know what? These people that are putting their lives on the line, that are performing services for this town, that have been doing it faithfully and religiously for years, are asking you to finally do for them what you're asking your own bosses to do for you. And that is it. Black and white. Glad to hear.
Sam Zanini, the building inspector. I just want to, I'm here to advocate on behalf of the, the town employees, um, that, and respectfully request that the board of selectmen have those increases as part of the budget. Um, there is no increase for me. I'm just here to speak on behalf of everyone else. Uh, as you know, I currently work in another town, um, and I have been, I've, I'm currently a union chapter president, and I've had the opportunity to negotiate for the last five, approximately eight years, over eight years, uh, three separate contracts. Um, the last one we did, we, we thought we were doing well. We negotiated a five-year contract at six, six percent, what accumulated to be six percent between a new wage scale and cost of living raises, a six percent raise for five years. Uh, that would give the employees approximately twenty-five to thirty percent, and we thought we were doing great until we hit all this inflation two years ago. Um, and I just wanna, I, the town where I work is one of the highest-paying towns in the state, and we still see people leaving. We still see people going. We're losing one this week. Uh, we still see people going to other communities that are still offering more money. So like the chief said, if, I would respectfully request to go in, and if it doesn't pass, then we take it on the chin and we just provide the same services. But, um, and I say that, you're gonna do what you're gonna do, but I, I really, I really think that's the way it should go.
Yep.
Because you gotta hang on to some good people. You gotta attract good people and hang on to them.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And it's, and to your point, but I wholeheartedly agree that people need more, but it's not just the salary line item. And we, the community, would be fiscally irresponsible not passing the budget this year because you cannot save your way to prosperity in every year, and it's not just the highway department. But Mike's is a great example of seventeen years to get up just to what today is. We can't keep trying to save our way thinking it's going to help us. It is hurting us. Whether we like it or not, as a community, it is fiscally irresponsible not to start moving forward.
Can I just make one point? So, because we always go, and I know we're in the municipal sector, and this is a job we pick, and it is what it is, and we can leave, and we can go into the, the private sector. I've been on both sides. I ran a business for a long time, many years, and I've worked in public service forever. I was a police officer years ago. I, I've, I worked for the state fire marshal's office. Here I am now. Um, and I know we picked this job, and we can leave. We don't wanna leave. We like doing this job. Um, and that's the difference, right? We're here, we have a base pay, we make that pay. And, you know, in good times, people in the private sector, they thrive, and they, and, and they work on, in different ways. They make money on commission and sales and different things, and they have opportunity to, um, to work on merit and stuff like that. But we're here. Um, I think everyone does a great job, and so, you know, hopefully people at home understand what I'm trying to get across.
I think Sam just indicated he's qualified for several jobs we have.
Did you note that? We will keep that in Sam's folder, right, for future reference? Yeah. As to everybody's point again, I mean, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over again, expecting different results. Nothing changes unless something changes. And this year, it starts with this budget, like I said, and like everybody else has been saying, so that we can make this town relevant and bring it where it needs to be in 2024. It's that simple.
Did you have to go there, Diane?
No, I'm sorry.
All right.
I used to like you, you know? All right. Um, we're gonna move on. Action items.
Well, before we move on, kind of what are we looking at in a timeline, calendar, decision-making type thing? Because when we.
The next meeting is next week, the fifth. The next scheduled meeting after that is the 19th. We may have to insert something in the middle, get it close to the holidays. Oh, just to remind it, no town employee in New York gets a Christmas turkey. I don't want to raise. So we can have three more meetings and be comfortable and stay far off of the holidays.
But if, but if we were gonna put the commercial out there right now to say, if you're watching this right now and you wanna be part of the decision-making, the night we're gonna make the final decision as to what our proposed verse, our default is going to be.
I would, I would say we do exactly what we've been doing. Have our meeting, the scheduled next Tuesday, go through it again, sleep on it, come back in that Wednesday, and then etch it. So like Mike suggested, we can get something out to the paper, um, before, and then we can re-post the same thing right before it's time to vote.
Yeah, because, because obviously at the deliberative, you can make changes.
Exactly.
But what you're saying, Bob, I think I'm in line with what you're saying, is we, we need a, a goal for, we're gonna vote. This is the number we're going forward with.
Right. So that would be next meeting, the Tuesday, which would be December, what is it? Fifth, and then meet the sixth, and then vote on it that Wednesday.
Call's already taken on the sixth. You have a CBA, public hearing.
At what time? At what time?
I don't think I can do the sixth.
Just do it the week after.
Yeah, week after.
Just do it the week after. Don't do the whole next day.
Just do it the week after.
Well, we could do it Thursday.
So I understand this.
Diane, I don't know if you know this, you need to be in front of a microphone so people can hear.
Name, address.
We used to have somebody that reminded people.
I know. I was gonna say, do as I say, not as I do.
So I believe you need to make sure that your warrant and your budget are ready for, your proposed warrants and proposed budget are ready for your public hearing January 17th, right? So they don't go to print till after deliberative session. So you have until that first week in January, really, to get this straightened out.
Yeah, so the next week's fine.
So you, I, I think you're rushing, and I, I think you need to take a step back and think about this and go back.
So fifth, 12th, and 19th.
So let me, let me propose this. December 5th, we know we have a meeting. It could be an agenda item. We can discuss it again. December 19th, agenda item, we discuss it again.
And then in the first week, January?
We start to, you know, we're starting to get better into focus. And on January 2nd, I think it is.
Whatever your meeting is, January.
January 2nd, you know, kind of, that's last call, and then.
That's when you set it. You say, this is it.
And then we would have to send it into the paper if we were gonna do that, like the next day.
Well, you're not gonna send it into the paper because you're gonna have the public hearing first.
That's different.
Right. Well, no, we want people before the deliberative to know about it when they come in, so that they're possibly educated.
Your deliberative session is in February.
Yeah, you got time.
So the public hearing is when you take public input on your, your budgets and your warrant articles.
Budget presentation.
Right. Then, once you do that, then you've just, you take all that information, decide if you're gonna make any changes that night. If not, then that is your budget and your warrant articles. Then the deliberative session comes. So between those two is probably when you could get your voter's guide out there.
Yep.
Okay? Does that help?
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
Don't forget town report.
The fifth, followed by the 19th, Tuesday.
Yep.
Both are Tuesdays, yeah?
Yep.
Yep. Regular scheduled meetings.
Good to go.
And everybody's cleared their, um, schedules, right, for those two days?
Well, those were previously. It's the extra meetings, but, uh.
All right, we good?
We don't get paid extra for the extra meetings, so.
And we will state that, by the way.
Wasn't in the budget.
Wasn't in the budget, yeah.
All right, Joe, you're up.
Excuse me. Uh, the committee is working diligently. We're still moving along with a, a lot of initiatives. We do have a community gathering coming up in two weeks, on December 16th, at the Horace Mann Community Center, sponsored by the Just Church. It's gonna be a, a meet and greet, uh, meet the committee and talk to us with any ideas that they might have. Or Santa Claus is gonna be there about 2:30, and we're gonna have a bake sale and a 50/50 drawing at that time.
Joe's been very hard at work.
Fantastic, Doc, Joe.
Thanks. Also, we have a.
Got a question in the audience?
You're doing an analysis?
Oh.
One second, after he's finished. Oh, okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, we have a tree lighting ceremony that's coming Sunday at 5 o'clock at the, the 22 South Main Street is the old, the historic church building. So we encourage everybody to come and bring a, bring an unwrapped toy for Toys R' Tots, or bring some food for a donation to the food pantry. There'll be refreshments, and there'll be some little toys for the kids and trinkets.
Very good.
And Santa Claus will be there.
Nice, nice.
Santa Claus is busy.
I'll bring my list.
I was just gonna say tomorrow is the forum for the age-friendly community. It'll be held here at, I believe it's 11:30.
Okay.
And we are providing.
Lunch.
I wouldn't go, so far as to call it lunch. We are providing light refreshments.
I almost was.
I was almost ready to come.
You can come and have a quarter of a sub. But we, actually, anybody that wants to come, Mr. Simone's on the committee, uh, but.
You can't have a committee in town right now unless Joe Simone's on the committee.
Exactly. Spread too thin.
That's a bylaw.
Sign you up for two more. As many people involved as possible.
Absolutely.
Once again, and, once again, this is something, it's not costing the town of Newton much.
That's right.
Maybe between 25 and 50 bucks towards, um, API's lunch budget, but all the rest of it is being paid for by a grant.
Yep, that we approved, that the gentleman came before us and talked to us. Yep.
So, once again, this, and this is part of something that we need for both the CIP, but most importantly, for the town's master plan.
Yep. And just so you know, I did bring that up to the planning board about resurrecting the CIP.
Good, thank you.
I do listen to you guys occasionally. Not all the time, occasionally.
And their reaction was?
They were like, are you spearheading it, Bob?
Oh, you got volunteered.
Anything else?
Trish hasn't been up here once tonight.
She did. She came up once, early. She's all sad.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for their service this evening, everybody's input. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:13.
And Jim, it is an adjournment? We don't have the non-public?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.